I'm still kind of formulating my opinion on the whole thing, but it seems like that's less of the issue of why we're not using that, the arena time. I mean, it would be nice, but if we provide transportation or what are options there, not so much the focus on the Bitterford Ice Arena, in my opinion.
And York would have 100% of the rights to use that facility if they chose to.
People would ask, was that offered to them?
I don't think it was offered. I think it was left in their athletic director's hands. And at this point, I don't know if they, some people have contracts or facilities or costs that they have with arenas. I know that they sent the schedule and Dennis was able to get a couple of home games at Bitterford Ice Arena. You know, when we were dealing with Massapeseq, Old Orchard, and others, those athletic directors didn't have input into where that is, just like on the girls' side. They don't tend to have input of where we play because it's kind of known where we'd play. That doesn't mean that will be the situation forever, because I think you scramble on these co-ops every year to see how you get enough kids to play, to fill a team. That's the hard part, is you're always scrambling to try to fill a team, and they're looking, and every other team is looking at their options.
John?
As far as the Ice Arena, back from what I can remember, and it probably is still running somewhat the same, it's run by a board, and the board makes the decision on who they're selling the ice to and who it's going to first. And it's usually priced by, the prime time is X amount of dollars and then the off-hours are the other. There's a lot of us can remember when ice hockey used to be very, very popular in Bitterford, and there'd be kids going to hockey practice at four o'clock in the morning and then going home, take a nap before they would go to school. So it's run by the board. It used to be self-sufficient and didn't use to come to the city for money unless they wanted to borrow it, and then they'd use our name to borrow it, and then they'd pay that fee back. But I don't think it's so much anymore, but that's how that used to run. And then York School, if they wanted to, they could have asked the Ice Arena for time, but it's up to their options of where they're going to practice. And I think their parents might have the same issue as what some of the parents here are saying. So if you're going to tell their parents that they got to get their kids now from York to Bitterford, I think it would fall into the same realm. And then I just ask, you know, if we had meetings in hand in the beginning, and you know you're going to York, and you sort of, you know, I would hope that we would have laid all this out, or at least, you know, Massapeseq used to bring their kids here, the parents used to bring their kids from there. So I mean, it's somewhat of the same scenario, and whether it's transporting one mile or 30 miles, it's all transportation. So I look at that. And then I'd ask is, how many co-op teams do we have now, and do we provide any transportation for any of the co-op teams that we go out to? And then I'd also ask is, how many sports do we have that we don't provide transportation to practice, even to home games? You know, if they got to go from here to Waterhouse Field, whether it be field hockey, lacrosse, chairing, whatever it happens to be, do we provide transportation for every team that has to come from the high school to go to there, do the parents have to figure out how to get them there, whether they're working or not working? So it's whether it's, you know, three o'clock in the afternoon and pick them up at five, or get them there at four, you've still got to make some arrangements. So it's always an inconvenience for a parent to try to do some of that stuff. And then, when do we decide when we, if we, if, say, nobody else wanted us this year, and it was only 11 kids, or 12 kids, is that a point when you have to decide whether you may not have a team because of safety reasons? If nobody else would have taken us, if York wouldn't have taken us, would hockey have just not been happening, been able to happen this year because there wouldn't have been enough children to play on a team, to safely play on a team, to sub out and everything else? So just not sure when you would get to a point where if you had, you know, York all of a sudden next year has five more kids and they don't need us anymore, what do you do then with the 11 kids if there's no sport?
My understanding is two-year, right Dennis? Two-year co-op?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
And then you are back to...
The drawing board.
The reshuffle.
Okay. And then, so at some point in time, there may be where there's no, where there's not enough, you know, kids to play in a certain sport, you may just have to do away with the sport. Because, you know, I can remember even Little League, East Bitterford Little League, I was talking to Randy earlier, used to have 16 teams play. They always played just within East Bitterford. They didn't have to travel everywhere else, and everybody's traveling nowadays. So I think we just, you know, and band went away at one point, and now it's back doing really well. So I think we just got to consider all the parameters of that, and it's just not, you know, it's just not, if you've got to travel 20 miles, you know, one mile travel is still the same distance. Somebody's still traveling, still inconvenient. So, thanks.
Doug, are we back online? Okay, the thumbs up, if it'd be the committee's pleasure to listen for Megan, and then bring up the athletic director, Dennis Walton.
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think we all need an opportunity to talk about this, because it's been a big thing that's been, and one of the reasons why I think we all need to weigh in on this is because as a board, for the last couple of years, I think we've said multiple times up here that we have a commitment to kids being involved in sports, and we keep saying that. So I think, you know, now, now it's gotten hard, right? This isn't an easy decision. There's a lot of variables. This is not convenient for anybody. So now it's like, how big is our commitment to kids playing sports, right? Is it worth the money? Is it worth the inconvenience? Is it worth everything that we're doing? So like, I appreciate all the options being laid out, but, you know, I have concerns about some of the reasons why and what the pushback is. And so I'm going to be really upfront about like, when we keep talking about the precedent being the issue of why we don't want to move forward with this, like, that's not a viable thing for me in terms of not wanting to move forward with this. Because there's a precedent that we bring the football team to home games, and there's no other sports team that gets transported to their, to their home games, right? So for some reason, that's okay, but we don't expect any other sports team to have that ask. So I think that we, we are flexible when we need to be. And so we just asked a team to travel this distance, and so if we want to fall back on precedent, I think that's just a way to say like, this has become too hard to try to figure out. So we're just going to say like, it's not in the policy. But I think we need to look at this a little bit harder. And what it's just going to come down to, for me, and I, and I understand the numbers and the cost commitment and the inconvenience of it, but I don't agree that one mile is the same as the amount of miles that we're talking about to get to York. And I just, like, I won't be able to sit here in good conscience if a kid gets into an accident heading down to York. I mean, that's just, at the end of the day, that's what it is for me. That's too big of a distance in the winter, in the winter months that we're asking kids to travel. And so my mind frame is, we've said we have a commitment to kids participating. We've broken precedent before, and we're asking for a lot of miles. And we're, we know in asking for these, we're going to have teenage drivers packing their cars with other underage kids to go down. So I struggle with signing off on that.
Marie, and then Randy.
Yeah. Having started girls' ice hockey from the ground up, I've dealt with a lot of this. Back before it was MPA, it was main girls' ice hockey. There was a little bit of a discrepancy, and I know it was mentioned at the last meeting. I don't know if at the time of the meeting, the numbers were eight-one for a total of nine. It looks like we're currently at 12-1. Did we recruit a couple along the way? Were they present at the beginning, the initial beginning? So I have a question with that. I also am looking at knowing that this would be a two-year proposition, because that's what you're signing onto when you go in as a co-op. And God knows, I had girls from Kennebunk, I had them from Massapeseq, I had them from Sanford, they all drove to me. And we had, trust me, we were the last people in, and we had awful ice time, terrible ice time, early morning, late at night, sometimes 11 o'clock at night, and sometimes 4:30 in the morning. So I know how ungodly ice time can be, but I do know that it got better, and we had prime ice time available to us back in the day. And we still hosted a couple of kids that were grandfathered in as we moved from main girls' ice hockey to the MPA, which now governs main girls' ice hockey. So I have a current numbers issue. I think I did hear some information that the middle school program has been a little bit invigorated. Am I wrong on that? Their numbers are looking stronger. What does that eighth grade class look like? You know, is this a particular bump in the road that we're looking at, where we find these particular numbers? You know, and again, it's really important, having started girls' ice hockey from the ground up, you're always recruiting. You're working it, you're working it, you're working it, you're working it. I had girls who had never put skates on, who, you know, who couldn't, you know, skate, who learned how to skate, you know, and played the game. And some of them were phenomenal athletes that were willing to, you know, give it a try. So, you know, for me, what's that, that future look like? What does the middle school look like? What does youth hockey look like? Are we hanging on to our kids, or are these kids going to premier leagues and playing instead of playing for their school? My daughter happened to play premier leagues for the state, and she played JV boys, you know, as well as her girls' high school team, which took the precedent. And we, you know, we made all those things work. So, you know, you're looking at someone that's kind of seen it all and done it all, so to speak. I'm a little leery that we're going that far, being a winter sport, if it was even, you know, a fall sport, a spring sport, but with ice, snow, the conditions that we get, I'm a little leery about that kind of travel and kids on the road. And I'm a little leery that this might be a deterrent that will kill anyone looking to play, you know, down the road. You know, is there something that we can do to hang on to this if we're looking at numbers that can be viable, you know, moving forward? And can we get out there and recruit and hang on to our kids? I also look at, I was looking at the information and the combinations of teams, and I struggled with this back then. When I started this, I had a daughter who I thought was going to be a little figure skater, but she wanted to play ice hockey. So, you know, she'd have her figure skating bag and her hockey bag, and let's go, here we go. We did, we did what we had to do, and, you know, we made all that work. But it's always been a problem with me when I look at the configurations, because sometimes I think people shop for teams to play on. So they kind of go here, there, or who needs what, or, you know, whatever. And they're from all over. Where Vermont, and this is, this is an MPA thing for me, whereas Vermont has a very regionalized approach, and it's very cut and stone. If you play, if you're a player out of this school, this school, and this school, this is who can combine. And then it's the other region, and another region, and another region. There isn't a change all the time. TA isn't going here, there, and there, you know, Sanford isn't going here, there, and everywhere. Sanford would have a home region. All the schools would have a home region. We didn't adopt that in this state. I pushed for it way back when, because it made a lot of sense. My daughter happened to be student teaching in a system that was part of that up in Vermont. She went to school in Norwich. So we were very familiar with what was happening up in Vermont and how it worked. But the MPA didn't go there. And, you know, you've got a kid from Saukapi Valley going to Scarborough. You have a kid going from here to, they're all over the place. And so I find a little bit of fault within the state in how we've let this, I think, get out of control. But that doesn't solve our particular issue. I'm just giving you the background to, you know, a lot of stuff, having been from the ground up, and especially with the girls' side. So, you know, what's before us now is, what do we need to do to hang on to this, to make this program grow, to be viable again on its own as it was? And, you know, the other thing we have to look at, there are just far fewer kids in school than we had way back when. We had, what, 300,000? We're down to under two, you know, across the state. And there are only so many kids to, you know, fill those roles. But, you know, what is it that we can do to keep this viable? You know, how are we going to recruit and get kids out there to play, to participate? And it's an expensive sport, and I, again, dealing with girls, they, if they didn't have skates, I found them skates. If they didn't have shin pads, hockey pants, they weren't always cute, they weren't always pretty. But I found every stitch of equipment that they ever needed to put on to be part of a girls' program. Every stitch of equipment, down to practice jerseys. I would go scour, take the broken sticks, packwood throw-on, I'd buy some blades from, you know, the shop in the arena. And we did what we had to do to get the girls on the ice. And we fundraised early on until we became a school sport. So we've got some work to do. There's a lot of issues in this one issue, I think. But how do we solve the current issue?
Randy?
I just wanted to move the conversation back to the different options that we have to get the transportation. Would it be possible for you to run through those options, just so this session can be had out loud? And then it looks like we might have an option F with the potential to get to York and jump on their buses too. So is that okay? Maybe ask some questions along the way.
After that, I'd love to bring Dennis up too, for his perspective, and so the committee can ask him questions.
Thanks, Dennis. We'll have Jeremy run through those options first, and then we'll get your perspective.
So, full district transportation would be us running a bus down and back each and every minute, Mike. If I have a driver, I have estimated costs in there. Talking with Mike, that's a very difficult possibility, situation for him, because he does not believe he'll have a driver all the time consistently. We also have to deal with, if I don't have enough for school, what do I pull that way? If we have a ballgame that's canceled? Like, take, you know, you get a snowed-out basketball game, let's move to the next night, and that's an away game. We've got to find a bus trip for that game. That, I believe, will lead to a lot of cancellations on a regular basis. If we went with a charter company, I was able to get ahold of two charter companies today. Custom Coach will do it for 650 per trip, and Ledgmere said they don't have the drivers to cover it. So Ledgmere's your other big charter company. Parent-driven minibus, we have a minibus available. We could take volunteers for that. Here's the Dayton minibus that we could use. There are six dates throughout the season when we have ski club in Saco that has Dayton kids on it, that they use their own bus to be part of ski club. Now, do I don't have those dates off the top of my head? It was February and March that they went to Shawnee Peak, or whatever that's called. That's an One-way transportation, could we get kids from school down to York and parents pick them up in York after practice? That could be an option. Probably could use the minibus for that. No district transportation. Finding somebody else on staff who might be willing to do that could be an option. And then York, I spoke with the superintendent today, and if they get to York, they have a bus that goes to Durham. They could take that bus.
What time do they have to be in York?
Four o'clock.
So what time do they leave the week to start?
3:30.
Okay, that's all of the options as we have, A through F. Dennis, give us the value of your perspective on this, and let's ask questions. Okay, sorry, more questions on the options?
Jeremy, when you mentioned the one-way transportation, that maybe we could use the van to get down there, do we have somebody that would be interested in doing that? Or you're saying like, just have one parent be able to do that, and then all the parents pick up later?
Again, so if we're using the district transportation, we're going to have to bid that out. People are going to have to have an opportunity to bid that process each and every week. So we will be kind of, whether employees want that run or not. Again, very much easier for us to think about van transportation than somebody with a CDL. Because if they have a CDL, we tend to have them on the roads for buses. We have gameplay that we have to get to. We have middle school gameplay that we tend to cancel or rearrange times all the time for. That CDL piece is pretty tough. That's, that's the hard part.
But you're saying that the van, though, might be, where a parent could drive, van might be possible for that, to get to York?
Correct. And that's been offered right along. I need to have fingerprinting done, because they'll be alone with students, and we need to do a driving check, you know, to make sure all things that could happen.
Other questions on the transportation? I'll start Dennis before we go to Dennis. Cordelia?
What's the distance from Bitterford High School to York High School? Because I know we have girls on the co-op side expected to drive from Wells, Sanford, and Kennebunk. So what's the difference between distance?
It's, I think it's 24 miles to York High School.
Okay, Mr. Walton?
Yeah, well, I was here mostly for, to answer questions. But from my perspective, I think that from the start, when we was communicating that there would be no transportation, you did have a good discussion about how co-ops work. And typically, schools who are attached to another school, they have to provide their own transportation to get there. We did a survey with the state, and I believe, I wish I had the number right in front of me, but 26 schools responded. I believe 19 were schools, that were sending schools, that were sending it to another, to another school, and not one of them said that they provided transportation. That doesn't mean we can't, but that's just the way co-ops usually work. I think the biggest thing for me, I'm not, it's not about me not wanting to transport kids. I can tell you, on a regular basis, a regular basis, I get a phone call from Mike Hallid or an email saying, that bus can't go out today, you're going to have to move that anymore. You know, the bus is scheduled for 3:15, Dennis, but they're not going to be there till 3:40. It's the best I can do. It happens on a regular basis. So even if this was something that was being entertained, my only, my only ask would be, you know, where is that pecking order? Are we going to cancel a sixth-grade basketball game to get hockey to their, to their practice? If that's what the school committee says, then that's what we do. But that's, I would need to know that, what the pecking order is, because I would have to be telling someone that we're not going somewhere. And it's going to, it happens a lot, a lot.
I think I saw Megan, and then Randy, and then John.
One of the things we heard the last time the parents were up here is that the minibus, is that what you call it, a minivan, whatever, wouldn't be able to fit the kids and their gear. So like, that keeps being the recommended option, but I'm not hearing that that would be an option that would work anyway. So I'm just worried that we're being asked to take an option that doesn't work.
Well, I think if that option was to be explored, the first thing we get to find out is how many kids are actually going to take that transportation. I wouldn't be surprised if some of the upperclassmen would say, no, I'm driving myself to practice. I'm not getting on a van, or I'm getting on a bus. So that, the number would be important, because we don't know that right now.
Randy?
How many kids are signed up right now? I keep hearing that nine or 11? 10?
10 registered.
Are we expecting 11?
Well, one Kennebunk, one Old Orchard Beach, 10, 10 Bitterford. Bitterford High School uses family ID registration, which I look at every day. There's currently 10 kids registered to participate in ice hockey. That number may go up to 12, I don't know. But I go by registrations. Currently, we have 10 high school players registered to play hockey.
John, and then Marie.
Good point about the sending schools all having their kids drive to us. So that's, that's a good point. But the, when you had your meetings in the beginning, did we tell everybody that they had to provide their own transportation to York? That is what's going to be?
Yeah, we had two, two parent meetings. That was communicated.
Was it understood at that particular time that there was going to be no transportation, and that it's going to be, if we did this co-op, it's going to be the responsibility to bring them?
Yeah. Well, in particularly, the second meeting. The first meeting was to explore whether or not this was something that we wanted to do. So it was more of a, here are our options, here are the schools we can reach out to. That was my opportunity to ask the hockey parents what they thought. And overwhelmingly, they wanted to be, they thought we needed to co-op.
Okay. And then, I know this, when you sign up, so, once that closes, I mean, because you usually have a set timeframe that, you know, you can register between X and X for a particular sport. Once that closes, I know you've let people back in again. So that number could change up or down, because then, depending on what it is, some parents may say they don't want to do it, or the kids say they don't want to do it. I've, I've seen that happen in numerous sports that my kids have been in over the time, that, you know, they'd start out with 25 and then end up with 17 by the time they get done.
That's correct. We have kids joining after the fact, and we have kids dropping at the beginning of seasons.
I just wanted to make sure that we did understand that, at the beginning of this process, that there'd be no transportation.
Yes.
And that the other schools sending, whether it's from Wells or Sanford, they're sending the kids, and the kids are driving themselves also.
Marie?
Couple of things. If, if we were to provide transportation, I don't think it's a question of who's going to take the bus. It's either you're all on the bus going, and you're all on the bus coming back. You don't put out that kind of money for people to pick and choose when they're going to ride, you know, and when they're not going to ride. That's just me. Unless a parent says so-and-so won't be on the bus today, I will get them to practice, but it's only by parent. Because otherwise, you have kids driving, and that's what most people are worried about here. So that's not solving anything. So it's either they're all on the bus going, and all on the bus coming back. So that's number, that's number one. Number two, this is for Mr. Ray, that timeframe to get someone vetted to potentially drive, how fast can that turnaround occur?
So if you were fingerprinted immediately, you probably can have your results back in seven days sometimes, if you get an appointment. As far as their license check, that's a pretty quick one.
And any means of expediting anything, or is it, or were just at their mercy?
Yeah, you're at the mercy of the fingerprinting process.
Okay.
On that piece. The other piece is pretty quick.
Lisa?
Yeah, and that's with the van, right? And so again, we're talking about a van that they might not fit on. So like Megan said, we can't keep talking about something that's not going to work. I know it's an option, but a parent driving a van, but if they're not all going to fit on the van with all their equipment, it's not really an option.
John?
I thought I asked you this earlier, about how York transported the kids now, and that was on a minibus currently to, to the...
So they use, they use a bus some days.
Yeah.
And when the bus is not available, they use a 12-passenger van, and a parent helps with equipment.
I just wanted to get that point out, because I did ask that question earlier.
Do York use a van?
Sometimes they...
They use a van sometimes.
So if we're going to send our kids to York, how are they going to fit their kids, our kids, and everything else?
They're going to do a bus then.
They would do a bu, they would, they would try to do a bus, as bus as they can.
Try to do a bus, because they might have the same problem we do.
They certainly do, and that's why they use a van.
So it's hard to say, yeah, we're going to do that, and we're going to use a van, and we're going to stick them in there, and get a parent to drive them up there, and then we get there and York says we can't fit them. Like, I don't know. I mean, it seems like this should have been talked about a long time ago, I guess. I don't know. So I don't know if the van is, is a real good option. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if it's something that would work. I know it's an option here, but there seems to be too many holes in it. Like, it might not work, and Mike, the parent might not be able to do it. And I think the real question was the time that they have to leave. A lot of parents work, and they might not be able to get on a van and do all of that. So is the van an option? I don't know.
Randy?
I agree with you. That, that doesn't seem like a real option, for a number of reasons. And maybe there's ways to make it work, but then you look at the full district transportation, I'm hearing things, and it sounds like that's not a real option to me, you know, when it comes to having to prioritize who gets the buses and all that stuff. So we, we have a couple of options that are not real options, and it sounds like to me that it's like we charter for 650 a day, or we don't provide transportation. I don't know, maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but that's kind of what I hear when I, when I see these options and discuss them at this point, unless I'm missing something.
So that's, yeah, that's what I'd like to hear from you guys, because, you know, Jeremy, you put out this memo and said what you recommend is the van. But I agree, I don't think that's viable, right? Like, six times, you already know you can't have it. And like, we already heard that it's not going to fit everybody at the last... And like, we already heard that it's not gonna fit everybody at the last meeting. So like, I don't feel like we can vote on that option. And then you're...
Just also, again, we're talking about fitting everybody. Last meeting, we were talking about nine players. That's one in the front seat, one in the other, and can you fit the bags and the rest? I'm not considering the Old Orchard student in this, because I don't think that we solve our problem based off the one Old Orchard student. Unfortunate.
That's fine.
But unfortunate, but, you know, we've got, we've got our problems set. That minibus is, without a charter, is the most consistent option that I think we can have. Because we could get people to drive it if they chose to, right? We could look at a van driver that might be able to jump onto that. And that could happen, and I don't know what the ski schedule is gonna be or when hockey's going to be done. But I know that if I use district trans, if I were to use district transportation, we will cancel that more than six times, guaranteed.
Right. I'm not, so I just, I need to know whether or not that comes off the table. Like, so, yeah, I mean, Nick's got his hand up, I don't know. I mean, I, I know this is out of process, but like, we just needed...
Any more questions for Mr. Walton? Okay, let's get some, okay, sorry.
About the charter. The charter you said is gonna be about twenty-four thousand. So right now, our hockey budget goes toward a thousand dollars a kid.
Yep.
So where does the charter money come from then? If, if we decide to go with charter, where does that money come from? Because I'm guessing we're already eating into our hockey budget by paying York to be part of their co-op.
So we pay a thousand dollars a kid to be there. We have a little over thirty thousand dollars in the budget for hockey. That's what we plan on. Hockey was done at, you know, you got about fifteen thousand from each team went to ice time, so that puts you at thirty. And then if you're playing at home, we had the boosters that would raise about another fifteen thousand. And then you had fifteen thousand for coaches. And so we have, it's not a question of what you have in the budget for money. Just are you going to spend it this way? And we know that there are certain costs that we can figure into this. We know that the charter will cost twenty-four seven.
But that's only for practices, that's not for games, right?
Correct.
So how much more for games? You gotta figure the whole number. Can't just look at it as a piece.
You'd probably be another couple thousand for games that we've talked about. We'd be able to provide that. We got some at home, we got some north of us. York will pick us up on the way up. And so you're looking at a practice situation of can you get somebody to drive that's consistent? That's the hard part.
Question, do you have a question for Mr. Walton?
Good. For Jeremy.
Okay.
Is there a way we can do a combination of, of things, or consider a combination of things, like maybe we do the, the van when it's available, but for those six dates, we charter on those dates or something like that?
We can do whatever you guys, we can attempt to do whatever we're, it's, again, not a big, this isn't that big of a challenge if we had oodles of CDL drivers. That's the issue.
Chad, and then let's get some parent input. Go ahead, Chad.
I, I just wanna touch on two things. One, John, that you brought up regarding when was this made? When was the travel issues made aware to the parents? And I gotta be honest, I've, I've been listening to this for a couple of weeks from various parents. And it's taken me a while to understand what a co-op means and what responsibilities lie with which party. And I can only imagine being a parent, being excited that your hockey season is not ending, that you're able to play. You may have missed certain aspects of the discussion during those discussions. So they may have been told early on that this was something that they were responsible for, but they probably wasn't focused on it. The, the second item, and it's kinda related to Marie, what you were saying, is that times have changed since your daughter played. There, there are a lot of distractions on the road right now, and this goes back to the need. And I think we're all, most of us are on the same page, that there is a need to get these kids there. I, I think one option that has not been identified is a stipend. Reach out to the teaching staff. If the van is an option, and I, I don't understand that, and I would need a parent to weigh in whether or not this twelve-person van is big enough or eighteen-person van is big enough. But if a van was an option, could we add a stipend to a teacher or a bucket of teachers that were willing to make a, a couple extra dollars to take this trip a couple times a week?
Mr. Place?
Thank you guys for taking this time. So the minibus, Jeremy, was, when I looked at it at first, was a great idea. It was gonna fit everybody, until the bus people told me that legally you cannot block the back door of it on the bus with the gear, with the gear. So you can only, you can fit twelve kids. You can only fit four hockey bags, because you can't block the aisle, you can't block the door legally, which you cannot ask a parent to do that. So that's why the little minibus wouldn't work for us.
So four bags?
Two on each side. If you could fill that whole bag, you could probably squeeze them, but legally you can't block that back door.
So you're saying twelve kids for four, well, okay, so...
We only have ten.
Ten kids.
Okay.
Six bags.
So you're still six bags short.
Okay, you're six bags short.
And you guys know hockey gear, you got goalie equipment, you got... The other thing I'd like to ask is, for Mr. Walton, was, was any of our ice time at the Bedford Arena offered to York? So we could pr, have some practices at home? And they took our three thirty ice that we used to have. And the Tuesdays and Thursdays Thornton took three thirty. Because it was open, because we're not using it. Right, because the, because the York boosters and the York coach kinda entertained if we had any open ice at Bedford Arena, they would've been all for it. But it was never offered.
They should've called.
Did everyone catch that? I, I think just for the purposes of people watching online, could you come up and say that again, Dennis? I'm sorry. And, and for the purposes of the minutes.
So what I was saying is that I have had conversations with York about what do you need from us? If you think you're gonna need ice time, if you think you need buses, we'll do what we can to help. But again, the way co-ops work is because we are attached to them, we are on their schedule. So Massa B six, TA, Wells, Sanford are currently with us on the girl's side. They don't do, they don't do anything. They're just with us. And whatever we do, whenever we practice, whenever we have games, that's it. That's the way it goes. So to me, there's not a whole lot to offer York when they have three practice slots a week at five PM next door. They're not gonna be overly excited about our nine thirty slot on any particular night. So the reason why I would say that it wasn't offered is because I knew that what we had to offer pales in comparison to what they already have, which is ideal ice times for practices. But if they ever needed anything, they asked if we could take a couple of games, we made that happen. We have two games at BIA. If they ever needed ice time and called me, I would seek out what we could, but it wouldn't be consistent by any stretch.
Megan, go ahead.
So given the, it looks like we can only fit four bags, maybe five on that bus. So it just doesn't look like the minibus is the way to go. And I'm, I'm hearing you about the, the school bus, right? Like, it's, I can't imagine trying to juggle, do I get the sixth grade basketball team to King Middle School or that? It's just, no. Right? We can't, we can't be making those decisions every day. That would become your whole job. It just seems like the two decisions in front of us are do we transport it all, or do we charter? So what I, I'd wanna know is like, is there money in the budget to charter? Because you just threw out like a bunch of numbers, fifteen thousand here, fifty, but I don't, I don't know what any of that meant, like...
We have about thirty thousand dollars budgeted for boys hockey.
Okay.
Thirty thousand two hundred-ish.
Yeah.
You have a thousand dollars per student going towards York.
So that's ten thousand.
So there's ten.
So now we're at twenty.
You have twenty thousand left in that piece.
Okay. So we're some thousands short. But then what did you say about during the games we have here, the BAA? What?
So we will also have away games that we...
Yeah.
Probe, probe us transportation to, the ones in Rochester and Durham. Okay, which will get picked up by our school bus service. So you've, you know, I haven't done the math on that one off the top of the head, but I'm gonna say that's two twenty-five hundred, depending on the trips and length of the time.
With our school bus?
Yep.
Isn't it cheaper than to go with charter?
No.
You just said it's six hundred and something a ride.
Six hundred and fifty dollars a ride.
But you're saying two games, our bus, twenty-five hundred?
No, that's all the away games.
Okay, you just brought up two, so...
Two are at home.
Okay.
And then anything that we would do on the road, you've probably got another twenty-five hundred dollars in. I think we got a nine-game schedule on the road?
Yeah.
So nine games on the road.
Okay, York's gonna come pick us up once.
The majority of our, the majority of them. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, got it, okay.
So that's what we would be transporting to.
I think that's the, Cordelia?
So I have a question about the bag problem. What does the locker room look like? Like, I know on the girl's side, we keep our gear at the rink, so... You don't have a locker room?
No.
No, I know you guys don't have one in Bedford. I mean, what do you have, like, with York? Nothing, okay.
Up to the mic, Nick, please.
So the ice arena we're practicing at in Durham, Churchill, is basically, it's an outdoor rink with a roof. So there's no, they don't have a team locker room, they don't have nothing. It's, I mean, there's no, it's basically outside. And if you ever, I don't know if Cordelia, if you ever played, or Marie, I mean, I'm sure your girls are old enough, you played in outdoor rinks, so what that's like.
I think, I think I've played there. Is there a spot that the York boys keep their gear, or do they just have to bring it back and forth?
No, they bring it home. They bring it home, they do their thing. And so York has given a bus since they started practicing in Durham. You know what I mean? I think it's like twenty-five miles from them. They did away with it for one year because of budget. A kid got in an accident and they brought it right back. And they're mandated for every kid to get on that bus. Like Marie said, if you supply the transportation, every kid is required to take it. Now, if they're chartering once in a while, because they can't find drivers, what, would, would they be willing to split a charter and we go pick them up to go to practice? I don't know if that's a...
I don't know. I, when I priced this out, it was based off, they asked me how many stops, how many whatever, and it was one there. We didn't have that conversation.
I just didn't know if it was an option.
I mean...
But, I mean...
John?
The six fifty a trip, it's round trip, right?
Correct.
Not six fifty down, six fifty back.
Round trip.
Okay. And then if the, if we have ten kids, because we're not worrying about Old Orchard. I guess Old Orchard would come along if we do something else, but if we had the little minivan or the twelve-passenger van. What about the twelve-passenger van and one of the little vans we have for equip? I mean, then you could...
Stipending two staff.
It's stipending two staffs based on what he was saying. So then you put a stipend in there and you do one, one van for equipment and then the twelve passengers. Then you don't have to worry about the charter, CDL. And you can also ask for stipends for the thing, but you can also ask the parents if they're willing to step up and get the fingerprints and do the other piece. So you have options in case a teacher called out.
But you don't have two vans. You don't even always have one.
I'd probably have a minivan that could carry equipment.
I, I mean, I see that running around town all the time.
Michelle?
So my question about this is then, oh, now I'm like losing this question. We have, if we have the van, do we, are there teachers that would be interested in driving an hour, sitting for two, two and a half hours and driving back an hour? Because even if we can make that work, we still have to see if there's a teacher that would be interested in a stipend to do that after working during the day. And that would be my concern. My other concern is chartering, so if you're looking at ten to twelve thousand for kids at York, and then you're looking at another twenty-five hundred for games, for our own transportation. So now we're looking at between twelve and fifteen, so we're left with fifteen thousand in the budget, but twenty-four thousand dollars to charter. So I wanna figure out how to get kids there, but I also, budget-wise, just don't, I just don't see how the numbers are matching up. And so I wanna find a way for the van to work, because it seems like the only, to me, it seems like the only option, that we have to find a way to use what we have in front of us. And maybe it means a parent has to take some gear or take some kids. I don't, I don't know. It doesn't seem like there's any good options, unfortunately, in front of us. And, yeah, I just, I have concerns about whether or not you'd have anybody to even sign up to do that. So is that even an option? Even have a teacher interested?
I probably would be more likely to have a van driver who may want to take that.
Van driver also one of our bus drivers, or is that somebody completely separate?
They would not have a CDL, so we would have van driver staff may rotate. We probably could do that.
Okay.
Or at least Mike felt like we could do that.
So the van is still the best option if we can figure out how to make it work? Is there space under the seats for bags?
Like I said, that little minibus, I went and looked at it and at first I'm like, wow, this is actually a great idea, until they told me that you couldn't block that back door.
Megan?
So one of the things we could, and like, I know time is of the essence, because like, practice starts next week, right? I mean, the girls are already practicing, right? So when does your practice start? Monday, okay. So I, I get that we have to make a decision. And so, I mean, I know that I wanna figure out a way to drive us there, like, I've already said that. And I don't know if this is something we all have to vote on or what you need from us. But the two things that I feel like are left on the table now would be to see if we could split something with York. I think that was a smart idea. And they might not wanna split down the middle, because their drive is so much shorter than ours or whatever. But if we could get closer to the number that fits within our budget by splitting something with York by picking them up along the way, like, it's worth an ask. Or now sending two buses down to York, right? So like, we have those two options on the table if we wanna consider, well, like, a minivan and a minibus, right? That's what we're talking. So we have the minivan, minibus option, a charter splitting with York, or not transporting. Am I, am I where everyone else is? Is that where we're at?
I think those are your three options.
Okay. And so Jeremy and Dennis, you agree that those are options? Okay. And like, that works?
And like, we met, we had the York meeting. I think the York co-op, everything is gonna be great. I think the parents were great, the boosters were great, coaches, that part, thank you. And then, but if you look at, we looked at all the other co-ops in the state, we are definitely the furthest apart from... Most, most co-ops are, you know, Bangor Brewer, Namering Towns, or like, you know, what's somebody else, Lewiston Auburn. Like, they were all, and their rinks are only twenty miles away, tops, not forty-seven or... So I mean, it's significantly more driving than, nobody else drives that far is what I get.
Good. Michelle and then Randy, and then I think Megan did a nice job outlining our three options, so start thinking about trying to move towards one of those. So Michelle, Randy, and then Marie, please.
The other question I would have for the parents is, I'm seeing the same parents that were here last time. Are there other parents that might be willing to drive that maybe, I know I had a schedule that would've allowed for something like that, and I did that through probably eighth grade, picking up other kids. Are there parents that can do that to help out with this van situation that we have?
There was a few that were interested. Just a lot of it runs the time. You need to leave here by three fifteen, where most parents are out of work. Yeah, you know, if, if practice would've been seven at night, you wanna get a few more, but...
Is there a parent that happens to have a situation where they could make that work and are interested? Because there's only a couple of parents here, so I'm just wondering what the rest of the group has talked about, if there's...
I think we could find a handful... I think we could find a handful that would be interested to pick, you know, no one would say I can do three days a week and whatever. But I think we could work to try to help.
Uh, Randy.
Is there any booster money or fundraising that happens that could bridge some of the gap on the, on the, um, coach option, or charter option, I should say?
That's something we can look at. I don't know what, what our boosters kinda. Yeah, we gave ten thousand to York's boosters to, to basically buy in, because they do a lot of, York does a lot of, like, hands-on community stuff, like, they do a military game, they do, they have a lot of tradition stuff, which I think is gonna be great.
In addition to our one thousand per player?
Yeah.
Boost.
Yeah.
I, I, just to move this along. It, this is either we're paying six hundred and fifty dollars a trip for practice, or we try to come up with a two-van option.
Can we get, is it stupid to say, like, we could get this trailer that you tow? Like, is that stupid?
No, if the guy driving can drive with a trailer.
Huh?
Or if we had a trailer.
Well, I don't know that we can hook a trailer to a bus.
Right.
That would be one of those things.
The minibus does, the minibus does have a hitch. Whether it's legal, I looked.
I know, but.
I've been trying to make.
You know, I, I guess I'm gonna put my other superintendent hat on of the Dayton School Department, who were fine with letting us use that, but I'm not sure they're gonna want us towing with it. I mean, that's, that's an option. We certainly can't tow with a minivan. That, we have just the two-wheel drive light minivans, that doesn't make sense. What probably could make sense is a minibus and a minivan, and you take the seats out of the minivan. Or I, I don't think some of ours are the stow-and-go ones, where the seats fold right into the floor. You can put a lot of equipment in one of those. Now, you're gonna need some air fresheners, if you're that person that's in that vehicle. 'Cause that's gonna be one gross ride.
No.
I agree.
Nick, you'd sign up for that one, I guess. That's your best option.
But having two vans and two drivers going down, is it any cheaper than the six fifty? If you'd weigh, paying two people, if you had to, the wear and tear on two vehicles, the gas, the tolls? I mean, just the tolls there and back at ten dollars, not counting your gas.
I get that piece, but, again, not my decision to make. But having parents step forward and drive some of this, with the district paying mileage, makes a lot of sense to me. I, I struggle with this amount of money for practice.
Can parents drive these things without you posting it to bus drivers?
Yeah, we're volunteering.
Okay.
We'd be volunteering those. And I just, I, I, I struggle with that, that piece, because that's an option, and, you know, we put that option out there. And, you know, we chatted back and forth about the van piece. The number goes up and down. Can we find an empty, uh, an older vehicle? Probably.
Okay, so I think we're narrowing in on, on two options, one of which we'd need a motion, and the other I think would just be moving forward, further research. I think it's a Marie, Lisa, and then John.
All right, so how many of these minivans do we have?
I've gotta see what's available today, because we transport so many kiddos to, you know, if a kid needs, if, if homeless steps up, we're on the hook for that. We're on the hook for some of those things. I've gotta check to see what, what would be even available on the van. I had the minibus available, that would be option number one. Six times, there's thirty-eight practices, and there's six trips skiing. And I don't know if those will, I haven't compared whether that overlaps with a game. You know, most of the time, that's available.
So I was just looking at, I mean, minibus and a van, but traveled with many girls to Connecticut and all over the place, you know, for tournament time. You know, could there be three minivans where two are passenger and one is equipment? And you have three parents step up and volunteer? I'm just, I'm just looking at a different configuration, just putting that out there.
Yeah, Lisa, I think is next, and then Chad.
Only quick, I just had a quick question. Is there possibility that there's a, uh, driver that drives the SMAC vans that would be interested in taking on some extra hours to do this, if we didn't have?
Maybe, maybe.
You know what I mean? Like, I know we have the vans, and you have the minibus that you've made arrangements for, and these drivers drive for Bedderford. So maybe they would want some extra hours and maybe pick up some of this.
Yeah, van drivers are much easier for us to.
That's what I'm saying, so that's an option. Like, I, I was going towards the charter and, and looking at the money and, and, and transportation. But then I saw the minivans we have for SMAC, and maybe we could use a few of those in the bus and, and get some of those drivers.
Minivans and drivers would be much easier, and van drivers, as I said.
Willing, and that's what I'm putting out there, and I think that's where we should go with that right now. That's my thought.
Chad.
I just wanna touch base on the, the parent volunteering thing. We, as a board, have sat here for nine months and listened to survey after survey, and speech from Jeremy and whomever about barriers to entry on school sports. And they have told us that their highest priority is getting as many people involved in these sports as possible. I do not think you can say that in the same voice as, well, we need parents to now step up and, and get these kids to practice. I don't, it's either one or the other.
I agree.
All right, committee, what's the, what's your pleasure at this point? Uh, John, sorry.
I don't know what's on the table for a vote.
Well, Lisa brought up the vans and using the SMAC drivers, and Jeremy said it's easier for that. But I also think it'd be good to have parents as a backup in case, God forbid, something happened that, you know, all three of them got the flu, or COVID, or something else. So I, but I mean, if you're gonna say vans, uh, minibus is gonna be the option, I think that's okay. And we'll, we'll look for the staff to do that, but I think the parents also need to be, be available on some way, in case something does happen. I think we need to plan accordingly.
And I agree with that. I, I'm all for that. The whole idea is just not packing one senior's kid car with three other kids, which wouldn't fit four hockey bags, but just the safety of them driving. And you know, even if you have kids that can drive themselves, it's gonna be a race to practice. It's, it's one of those that, you know, that's.
Kids.
Yeah, the whole point is, yes, exactly. We've all done it. I mean, I had, I used to have hockey practice at two-thirty in the afternoon, and school would get out at two. Try getting to your ice arena from here, and dressed, and be on the ice at two-thirty. Because if you didn't, you paid the price.
So what's hard right now is that I'm not sure what we're making a motion for. Because we don't know if any of that is available, like Jeremy's saying, well, I'll check, right? So, um, one of the things that I would wanna know is, is it actually more cost-effective to send two or maybe three vehicles down to York than it is to charter? Because I don't know that it is, right? Like, uh, if we're doing this to like, prove a point, to say like, well, I think parents should have to step up. That's why I don't wanna charter, like, I'm not comfortable with that point. I think we get the safest and most reliable transportation. If we're investing money, we're investing money, and I want it to be the most consistent and the safest transportation. So what's, I, I just wish we knew, you know, like, these are our two options, and this is what it's gonna cost us. I mean, if, if, it's gonna cost us the same amount of money to piecemeal three vans and, and ask this of three or two drivers, but I, you know, as to charter, so are we, are we voting on whether or not we wanna transport these kids to practice, yes or no? Uh, then we should just take that vote, and then say, we need to know what the options are coming forward. Because I don't wanna just say that and then say, uh, we're gonna make a decision based on information we don't have yet on which direction we go, right?
Think you could, the only need a motion for is if we're gonna do the charters, 'cause that would be an expenditure. We could, the committee could just direct the superintendent on the vans side of things. Uh, John.
So Jeremy, what's the, the average rate of one of these van drivers?
Well.
That you pay on, on one of these trips? Time and a half, whatever?
Time and a half.
Okay.
Probably gonna be, uh, at time and a half, you're probably gonna be thirty-seven.
Huh?
Probably thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, so forty dollars an hour, a hundred and sixty dollars a driver, three hundred and twenty if you got two. So it's, it's half price, basically, than, than chartering a bus each time, so.
Okay, I mean, that's important information that we didn't have two seconds ago.
Yeah, but that's, that's how I would look at that. It's half the price of chartering a bus.
Then you get your, you get your tolls and your gas, you get your wear and tear on the vehicle. You weigh all that out, I bet you're earning a whole lot of savings.
My worry too.
And the conveniency.
What's the committee's pleasure at this point? Is there support for the van side of things, or?
I'll make a motion that, that we ask Jeremy to arrange to have a van, a minibus to transport the kids to hockey. And that he reaches out to the parents to find out who's going to be as a backup as needed, and get them in the process of getting fingerprinted and license checked, and background checks, and everything like that. So there can be some sort of schedule between whether it's in-house drivers or, or parents.
Can you add to that, hold on, before you second, can we add to that, that it's mandatory that the students take that transportation? Like, we would not allow kids to drive themselves. I think that needs to be a part of that.
I, I mean, based on all our others' policies, if we provide transportation, then they have to take it, but I'll add that to the motion. If we provide transportation, every child needs to take it.
Is a second okay with that? Marie?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Just because I'm a stickler, kids and equipment.
Yeah.
Kids and equipment.
That's why we're getting two. Yep.
All right, is everyone, uh, clear on the motion that we have before us? All right, any, uh, further discussion? You sure can.
So we're saying that if we do that, though, and for some reason the van's not available, then parents will be responsible to get their kids there? Because there might be a few times when the van's not available, right? Oh, the bu, the minibus. I'm so confused right now with the buses and the vans and the.
Again.
But you might be able to get three minibuses that you got.
Mike will have to work on that piece to figure out what the situation is.
Something happens, and they're not available, the parents will be told, so that they can figure that out that day.
Yeah, I mean, again, very, very different.
Is that gonna happen more than not? You don't know, you don't know.
Don't know.
Well, we're asking, I think the motion is that we'll provide the transportation.
It's gotta be one way or another. We can't flip-flop and have parents.
We have the motion for to supply the thing with drivers, and if not drivers, we got parents.
But we provide the transportation.
The, the buses. Rather, he may have to do two, or he may have to say, I got a regular bus this, for this particular practice.
All right, now we got a motion before any further discussion?
The most confusing motion ever. Who's gonna have to write that up?
I think probably Carrie.
She can call.
Or Mandy. Bless you all. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And anyone opposed? Okay, looks like that's unanimous. Thank you, thanks, good discussion. Uh, very good. Close out that topic. Thank you, Mr. Blaze, unless you had something further?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the involvement and, uh, good discussion. Okay, that takes us to item B, which is the N W E A fall reporting. Think this is just a report out, Jeremy? This might be one for Mandy.
All right, so good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about our N W E A testing progress that the students just completed this fall. Uh, kindergarten through grade ten were administered this nationally-normed test. So let me start by providing some context about the N W E A MAP assessment. It stands for Northwest Evaluation Association, and MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. We administered two assessments for math and reading to students grades K through ten. Uh, K, K one and two are not required by the state, neither is ninth grade. For continuity and understanding where our students are at, to better instruct and make those changes within the classroom. We start right with kindergarten students all the way through grade ten, knowing that grade eleven, we have students that are taking a myriad of other assessments that we don't wanna add yet another one onto them at that time. So students are going to encounter various questions, multiple choice, drag and drop, fill-in responses. And it's important to note that the achievement levels are based on normed reference data, using a fiftieth percentile prediction from that normative sample. And so that's how the data is going to be collected and shared with you today. So the first part that we're going to review is MAP growth data in reading. And if you recall, I tried to do this by cohort, so, uh, student groups year over year. Uh, so that you can see where they are at. So this depicts, uh, K through ten, and shows the, the first yellow bubbles down. It's hard to see up here, but certainly in front of you, if you're looking at it, you can see that the achievement scores are there for all grade levels. The colored bars represents the distribution of students across the various achievement categories, with a median percentile shown in the yellow circle to the left-hand side. Some key observations here. Our kindergarten students have a medium at fif, at the forty-fifth percentile with twenty-three percent in the lowest achievement category. Grades one and two are performing around the forty-first and forty-third percentile. We see stronger performance in grades four through six, with the medians at fiftieth percentile or above. However, grades seven through ten show a little bit of variability there, with grade eight at the forty-sixth percentile. And grade nine is also there as well. The distribution bars help us not just to see the median or the average, but how spread out performance is in, within each grade level. Which is really helpful when we're talking about intervention planning for our students, and how we're responding to that data obtained. So again, for reading, a little bit difficult to see from here again, but I've included the national normed data for each subset as well. And if you look at these charts, F K is fall kindergarten year, and then you have winter K, spring K. F one is fall first grade, so it's the same pattern that I've used to identify those testing windows all the way through. These three charts show the cohort growth over time. For our current kindergarten students, this is their first fall assessment, and it's around a hundred thirty-six on the RIT scale. And you'll see that it's slightly below the average trajectory for the national norm. Class of twenty thirty-seven, our current first graders, has shown steady growth from kindergarten through first ga, grade, tracking two, but significantly below the national average. Most encouragingly is the class of twenty thirty-six, our current second-grade students, shows consistent growth from K through their current second-grade year. By fall of second grade, they're performing right at or slightly above the national average. When I look at that, for me, that's saying that our early literacy interventions are having a positive impact over time. Moving on to our upper elementary grades, the class of twenty thirty-five, currently in third grade, has maintained steady growth since kindergarten and is tracking very close to the national average. Class of twenty thirty-four, our fourth graders, show strong performance and has remained consistently near or at national averages throughout their school career. Class of twenty thirty-three, our current fifth graders, is particularly noteworthy. They've shown strong, consistent growth and are currently performing at or slightly above the national average. This cohort started slightly below average in the first grade, but has made significant gains since then. Class of twenty thirty-two, our sixth graders, show strong trajectory and has consistently performed at or above the national average since third grade. The class of twenty thir, thirty-one, our seventh graders, similar patterns with performance tracking along the national average line. However, the class of twenty thirty, our current eighth graders, show some interesting variation there. While they've generally tracked near the national average, there's been some fluctuation in their trajectory recently. We need to look at that a little bit more closely to try to understand why that has taken place. Um, and if you look, if you take the fall of grade seven to the fall of grade eight, that's year-over-year change, it's a little bit of a dip there. Um, so I have some ideas as to why that might be happening. Certainly, the, the folks at the high school are looking at this data as well. All right. Both our ninth grade and tenth grade cohorts show relatively stable performance patterns. They've generally maintained their position. They've generally maintained their position relative to the national average throughout the school careers that they've had. While they're performing near the national average, there's an opportunity to push these students to exceed the national norms. We've talked about that quite a bit. What can we do to take those students and really, really focus on growing them at whatever level they're at? So even our top performers need those opportunities to shine. This summary chart provides a snapshot of all grade levels from K to 10 in reading. Overall, we see a very solid upward trajectory. We can see that we are making growth towards those national norms. Again, I want to remind you, the RIT score that we see here today is a student snapshot of how they took a test one day this fall. One day last fall, one day last winter. You get the idea. We should look at this as how is a student growing over time? And how do they compare with other students across the country? Furthermore, when our staff drill down and look at this data, they're able to see areas that the student perhaps needs additional support in and are able to provide them that support. Moving on to MAP, math data. Again, this is a very similar chart to what you saw previous. If you look at where folks are at in terms of their, their growth and their achievement, we have most of the cohorts that are very, very strong. And we have a slight variation with grade 7 at the 40th percentile, which is certainly an area of concern. If you recall, last year, we spent a great deal of money in terms of putting us into Math in Focus, which is a K to 8 curriculum or K to 7 curriculum that we're using prior to them getting to this campus. And we're hoping that we're gonna see some improvement in that area along with the interventions that we're having for our students. Looking at our youngest mathematicians here, the class of 2037 shows just their initial fall data point, which is at approximately 142 RIT, and it's right at that national average. That's certainly something to celebrate. Our 1st grade students demonstrate steady growth from kindergarten through 1st grade and is tracking very close to the national norms. And our 2nd grade students are strong growth as well, even though you can see that there was a dip from last spring down with the national norms. You will see that our norms are right there. Our average RIT score is meeting that national norm. So, one of the things that did happen this year, I don't know if you remember, but last year I had presented about how we're seeing some variation in this data because of the impact of COVID. And the norms that were, this test was based off of, had not been looked at during that time. They were just reset this summer. So the norms that we have from this fall session is based on the new norms, and everything else that you see below that were the old norms prior to COVID. So now the norms, the national norms, have the COVID effect sort of into play with those numbers. When I look at our current 3rd grade, shown steady growth since kindergarten. There was a slight dip in 2nd grade winter before rebounding quite strongly. They're currently tracking near the national average. Our 4th graders show a more variable pattern with some fluctuation across the testing windows observed. And finally, our 5th graders demonstrate strong performance and are consistently tracking above, at, and very close to that national average over the course of their, um, testing sessions. Our 6th graders show generally strong growth and maintain performance near or above national average. Our 7th grade students, we know that that's an area requiring some of our attention. While they started strong in elementary school, we're seeing the traject- trajectory falling slightly below that national average. Our 8th grade students show relatively stable performance, tracking near the national average. And two, there's been variation all along across those testing windows. So for some of these cohorts, you're able to see interesting patterns that when you take a look at those and try to, why is that happening? Why are they dipping every winter? Why are they not as strong during the fall, but look at the spring? So it's really important when you're looking at this data, take the year-over-year window because that can help understanding, seeing the whole plan, if you will. Class of 2029, our 9th graders, stable growth trajectory and is also tracked near the national average. Our 10th grade students, similar patterns. Both cohorts show the characteristic leveling-off growth that occurs in high school mathematics, while performing at the national norms. Again, too, we have an opportunity to provide additional opportunities to accelerate student learning in this area. This comprehensive view of mathematics performance across K to 10 shows several important patterns. We have strong performance in our elementary grades, with most students at or above the national average. There's a general upward trajectory in RIT scores as expected with grade progression. However, we can see some flattening of the gap between our students and national norms in the middle grades, and in some cases, we're falling slightly behind. My high school performance seems to stabilize near the national average. So every time I come here, the most important part is, so what? What's the next step? These graphs are great, Mandy. The data tells a story. I can make it tell whatever I want it to. But now, what do we do behind the scenes? I think that's really important. So as a curriculum committee, part of the work is to look at some of the, the data that we have, look at some of the subgroups, try to understand a little bit more about the students, and try to figure out what are our big takeaways? What are the ahas? While that's happening, our building leaders are going to be looking with their teachers at that grade level data. They have folks on staff that really look at the data, try to understand the data, and the data, again, tells a story about the student. And it's just one piece that makes the student who they are as a learner. So understanding them comprehensively will help our teachers better address their needs in the classroom. Our academic coaches support teacher analysis and shift the instruction and target lessons. I want to tell you that I wish that was happening more in our schools. Oftentimes, our academic coaches that we have on staff, we've shifted to help more with intervention support. And so they're doing less coaching of teachers and how teachers are teaching, and more truly supporting small group instruction with our students. What I'd love to see is having both and more interventionists in our schools so that we can do all of this work a little bit better. I, knowing too, that the reports are also going to go home and be shared with parents. They've already seen them, and they know that they can speak to their classroom teacher with any questions that they may have in understanding what the NWEA data is and what it means for them. I know I just went through a whole ton of information. If you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Questions for Ms.?
Do my best.
Marie?
Sorry. Mandy, once you guys have gone through those initial next steps, will you come back to us and let us know where things are, where things are gonna pan out, and what the next steps are from there?
In terms of the, the interventions that are already underway in our schools, so they're already happening in small groups. So depending on the, the school level, they will be, um, meeting the students in small groups to provide them additional supports wherever they may be. I can certainly come back with a more formalized memo specifically because it does look a little bit different in each of our buildings. Uh, and then they'll have another session of this test in the winter as well. And I'll, I'll provide a memo at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. It's much appreciated. Thanks for this excellent data. And, uh, interesting to identify those specific grade level concerns. Okay, that takes us to the enrollment report for October 1st.
Yeah, we've updated this, uh, several times throughout the fall, but this is the final numbers, um, for the October 1 enrollments. Uh, the biggest piece that you'll see is that our subsidy count is gonna be up 39 students. That's significant, um, in this piece. You'll look that, basically, when you look at our poverty standard, we're up almost a percent. Uh, so that number's about the same. Um, and then you'll see our ELL count is 36 up, uh, overall. So those are the significant factors for 279. Uh, but those are final and where will be, um, based off student subsidies.
Questions for Jeremy on enrollment? John?
So now they'll use these numbers to figure out how much money they will send that we will not be able to use, correct?
Some of that, yes. The, when you look at the 36 up, that will be where money will come in that we won't be able to use this year.
Need to do something with that so we don't...
The, the biggest, the biggest piece of all of this when it comes to subsidy is going to be what the Bedford rate growth is, and I believe I have that calculated somewhere, over what the state growth is. Because if you could, if our valuation could stay right in the state range and then have the enrollment growth, that could be slightly positive for us. Um, that would be, that would be the biggest piece.
And don't you have to leave pretty soon?
Fairly soon. We'll get there.
Okay, uh, we're in homestretch. This, the next, uh, item is, uh, the after-school tutoring. We do need a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we...
Second.
Been moved and seconded to do the after-school stipend with funds paid for through the grant. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And it looks like that is unanimous. Okay, we have a, a series of second readings here. Let's run through these. And, um, Michelle, if there's any comment or any, anything you want to interrupt, please feel free. So, because we have a second reading of policy IFF, Remote Instruction.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That one is unanimous. We have a second reading of IKF, Graduation Requirements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Second reading of BEDH, Public Comment at School Committee Meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Second reading of ACAB, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of Students.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. The second reading of ACAB, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of School Employees.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Second reading of JIH, Questioning and Searches of Students.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. And the last one is the second reading of JLCD, Administration of Medication to Students.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by John and Marie on all of them. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay, that takes us to, uh, public participation. Anybody from the public wishing to comment this evening? Excellent.
Just, oh, oh, I've never used a microphone before. This is new for me. Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Tori. Uh, I'm a senior here at Bedford. Um, some of you know what I'm here to speak to you about tonight, but some of you do not. Um, I am here to speak about the, uh, meningitis vaccine and the requirement to, uh, attend school on account of it. Gonna be a lot of information spit at you. Um, I do want to start, uh, with my credentials because I want you to know that I do take this very seriously, and I'm not here to waste your time. Um, I have taken all the honors AP courses offered at the Bedford High School. I'm now taking college courses at SMCC York County. Um, I have applied to over, well, 20 colleges, because that's all you can apply to. Um, I do two sports outside of the high school. I'm part of three clubs here. I started one, actually, I started the book club. And I actually have four jobs during the summer, and during school, I just keep one, uh, so that I can focus on my studies. Um, so I have not been in high school for the past two weeks because I do not have my second meningitis shot. Um, I've been talking to my doctor. I went and saw Marty. I have had conversations with Jeremy Ray. I'm trying everything to move around this. Uh, I have done a lot of research, which I'm gonna speak to you about. So meningitis vaccine, for those who don't know, um, is required at the 7th grade level, and then again at the senior level. It is to protect students from the menin- meningitis. Uh, however, uh, the second one that is required at senior year is only required in four states. Everywhere else, it is a recommendation. Uh, Governor Mills has removed the usage of, uh, philosophical and religious exemptions, meaning that the only way around this is through a medical exemption, which doctors are very strict on giving. Um, and I am not getting it originally from morals, but, uh, after lots of research, really about the risks, uh, if any of you have children still in school level, this is really important. Um, I specifically want to talk about the largest risk of this vaccine, uh, which is, it's pronounced glombar, which I'm probably butchering, but, uh, it's paralysis. And it's one of the biggest risks of the second meningitis shot, which is just a booster. Um, and a lot of young children who receive this vaccine can face this, and there's, there's no coming back from, um, this, this syndrome. Um, obviously, with any medical usage, you'll still have your regular risks, soreness, redness, allergic reaction, whatnot. But, I mean, paralysis is not a small thing, and there are other um, risks of this vaccine, but I think that's the largest one that I, I'm like, that's awful. I mean, death is still one of them, but I feel like that's something that you get with, with anything, medical thing. But I really want to focus on my charts here. Sorry, they're not up there. I didn't know that that was a thing. Uh, this is my first one of these. Um, I want to talk about, this is the chart of the cases from then, from 1970 to 2020. 2020 was when this law was put in effect. It's only been four or five-ish years. It has been on a decline since the 70s. And my age group, 15 to 18 years, is the third lowest at-risk. The most at-risk is college students. But this isn't a vaccine that's required in college, yet those are the people who are most at-risk after babies. Um, but I think that fails to recognize the students who are gonna just be blue-collar workers, won't be going to college, or is just going straight into the workforce. Yet, we require this vaccine in high school when it's really affecting college students. This, this disease is affecting college students who live in dorms, and it's unhealthy in the, the dorm atmosphere. Any of you who went to college probably know this. Um, but we require it in high school when some of the students aren't even gonna be going to college, aren't gonna be at risk for this, you know? Um, and I don't know, like, we don't really have outbreaks of this in the high school area because students aren't living together, you know? We're, we're a public school. We all go home to our families. We're not living together in these dangerous places. Um, this, this vaccine also has the highest exempt rates. Most doctors actually are clearly against it because they are giving the most exemptions. Now, whether that be because it is unhealthy for students or because they actually have a medical reason, either way, it's still the highest exempt rate. It also has the highest missing records in high schools, uh, meaning that students are still going to high school, missing this record that is supposed to be the, one of the most important ones. Strange. Uh, it also has, like, the lowest vaccine rates. The lowest amount of vaccines have been given off of this, the meningitis vaccine. Um, and also, outside of Maine, and the three other states that require this, in the nation, this is just a recommendation. It's not even, other people, if I lived in Massachusetts, this wouldn't even be an issue for me right now because outside of Maine, I think it's California, New York, this isn't even an issue. They still have the religious exemption and the philosophical exemption, but it's, doesn't matter because it's not a requirement for them, but it's a requirement here in Maine. Um, and I, you know, I, I also want to just say for real quick where I got these numbers from. From the CDC website, the place that this is literally put into effect. Um, and also the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention, so, all good sources. Let me know if you have any questions about that. But I'm here because I can't go to school. I am set to graduate top three, senior class. I'm, I'm here for two hours every day for AP Lit and... I'm here for two hours every day for AP Lit and Physics. I have talked to my teachers. They have been still trying to give me my work. I'm still performing well in my classes, but I can't be here, and I don't want to graduate early. I want to graduate with my class. I don't want to get my GED. I want to go to college. I don't want to get a state degree. Like, I have aspirations for good colleges, but that could just all be going away now because of this. So I didn't know if you had any questions about this or if there was anything that you could do for me, even if it's not a fix for now, because this is a big issue and it is at a bigger level than just this. But I came here to talk to all of you because I'm talking to everybody I can, trying to get back into school. Yeah.
Thank you, Tori. We appreciate your comment. The way this works is we'll take in the information and then you'll provide some kind of response, but no action taken now, but thank you. Thanks for the public comment. Chair's discretion, if you want to make the comment now, that'd be fine. Go ahead.
So just trying to follow through what you just presented. It sounds like you are set to graduate, or you were set to graduate at the end of this year.
Yeah.
For reasons of this vaccine, you are unable to come to school to fulfill the requirements placed upon you to make that graduation. I just wonder if there's anything, home learning or something, that the school can discuss or provide to this student who seems to be, you know, assertive, willing to come here and talk to us, and, you know, a contributing member of society? And I'm just wondering if there's anything we can help to allow her to graduate on time without missing it.
John?
State law sets what vaccines they have, correct? State law says, because I can remember Kiara having to get the same vaccine or she wasn't gonna be able to come to school. And it's a requirement. It's not something the board can change or do, and it's set by the state, and the state would have to change the rules. I mean, we can't-
Come into school or graduate?
To come into school and to follow the process. So I don't think if you come into school, I don't, I don't know how you could go to the graduation, you know, with everybody else if you're not, I mean, I don't know how that would work. Jeremy would have to tell me. I don't think you could do that because the state law says you gotta go, you know, you gotta have this, and you gotta, these are the procedures you need to do to do that, and that's part of the graduation process. Getting work is, that's easy, and just probably wouldn't be able to graduate with class, and I think that's, that is what, what she really wants to try to do is to graduate with the class.
Is it to graduate with the class or get the diploma? I guess-
I mean, I guess both, you know? Obviously, the diploma is important for my future, but I am still a high school student. I mean, I do still want to graduate with my class. I still want to do prom and, you know, walk at graduation, especially, you know, like, maybe being top three in my class. I mean, that's like, you know, sitting front row with those other students who I've, like, worked with and done projects with and, you know, who have helped me to get to where I am, you know? I still want to do the high school stuff. And, I mean, yes, obviously, I definitely need the diploma, and that's priority, but the other stuff still isn't as important to me, I think, as it would be to any high school student.
Okay, well, you've given us a lot to take into consideration here. Thank you, Tori, and not 100% sure what our course of action will be, but we'll certainly be doing some research, so thank you.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you for your time, too. It was great meeting all of you.
Thank you. Hope you continue to excel. I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else wishing to provide public comments this evening? Okay, communications from the board. Lisa?
I'll be brief. This was a long meeting. Are you late for your next meeting? I'm gonna make you later. Well, I just wanted to say, this is my last meeting, and it's bittersweet, kinda, after 16 years of sitting right here, facing him. It's definitely gonna be an adjustment not to see all of you. It's really been great. I want to thank the administration because I think they've been great on any decisions we've made, pivoting, working through it. It's been amazing. I can't, I also want to thank, and I'm sure he's watching because it's my husband and my son Cole, because anyone knows it's on a board. It takes a lot of your time, and Cole was in primary school when I started this, and it was mommy has a meeting came out a lot, and Dave had to pick it up, as I'm sure anyone that knows that has kids, and it's more than two meetings a month. It's a lot more of a dedication, and when Rebecca left and the mayor and I had to find a replacement, I think we found a good one, and the question that came out a lot was, how much time? You know, is it a time-consuming thing? And, you know, it's two meetings a month. How much time could that be? Well, if it was two meetings a month, I might be able to go a few more rounds. But it's a lot of investment, so everyone here is amazing. It's been great working with you all, and it's been great working with, I'm gonna say it, the superintendent. The assistant isn't here because he agrees with me more, at least in front of my face. We've definitely had our ups and downs, and I don't know who is gonna take over from me keeping you in line. You know, I'm very, very concerned about that because as much as I've given to you, you've really taken it, and I think it was good for you. I think that it built a lot of character, and you see, now you can take whatever anyone throws at you, right? We didn't always agree, but I think when I look back at the 16 years, and not with you 16, but I started with Sarah Jane, there's been a lot of growth in the school. I don't know what part I had in it, but I always would hope to think that I had a positive influence in making decisions here. We never know, right, if it's the right one. I lost quite a few battles. There's still a few more that I have on my plate that you're all gonna have to take over. You'll call me, I'll tell you. I think what's happened to me is my expiration date has come because I'm more than just old school. I'm old, old school, and so what I feel I would like to tackle is probably something that's not top priority. You know, I would tackle dress code, which I talk to him too much about, but that's a small thing. I would tackle what kids eat in school, but that's a small thing. I would tackle behavior and accountability and, like, I think all of those little things would eventually have a tipping point that would affect the big things. That's always been the way I felt, and, but the little things always take a sideline because there are so many incredibly huge things that are happening in the schools that you all know and that you were taking a lot of hits. And so if I said, as a school board member, I want you to tackle dress code, you would all despise me and say, when is this woman going away? But I do feel that it would, all of those little things would eventually make a difference, and especially the behavior and making kids accountable, and I'm not talking punitive here, but I think that a focus more on academics, I know we're focused a lot on SEL, and so I always said, you know, I think we've done a lot of that. Let's try to make kids more accountable. Let's get kids to take their PJs off when they come to school. That's a hard one. And let's not feed kids from the time they arrive to the time they leave. It's like, we used to be able to have breakfast, wait till lunch, but now kids eat all day long. And so those are the little things that I would have probably, I don't know, brought up here and there, and Jeremy would have probably said, that's too little of a thing, and I don't want to deal with it, right? And then we would have argued, and it would have went under the carpet. Is that true? Is that, no? So you, when I, when I, when I did, I was on the interview committee to hire you, and one of the concerns was how young you were, but I think this job has aged you well, right? So I'm-
See, I had a little bit of hair before I knew you, Lisa, and then-
I don't know about that. I don't remember that, but I do-
I pretended for a while that I wasn't bald.
No, I do, I do. I appreciate also, I want to, if anyone watches these meetings, and I guess they do, to thank the community, too, for giving me all the years here, because that's a lot of votes, and that's a lot of years, and I hope I did a good job. We'll find out. And if any of you really miss me, well, I'll be in touch with still some of you, or want to see me, you come to the city council meeting because that's where I'm gonna be fighting the fights, not here anymore, but, and Jeremy and I have done 14 budgets? 13?
Three votes that first year.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so I don't know why I remained on the finance committee because it was, it's dreadful.
That first year was, that first year, we voted down, we voted, it got voted down again, and then I think it passed on its third try.
I think you're right, and I think-
Right, John?
Yeah, he's about right, and you discussed taking RNs and replacing them with LPNs, and Cole was at primary school, and I said, don't go to the nurse. She will not be happy, and she knows who your mother is. And that was his, your idea, though. I was like, people do get mad, and I think when, one of my first, because when you're totally new on the board, you learn the hard way. You really do. Like, no one teaches you the ropes. You take your little training, and you do this and that, and then it's like, oh my God, it's overwhelming. And we were at City Hall, and we were, I was complaining about stipends, and boy, I just said, we spend too much on stipends, and here I am, brand spanking new, green, don't know anything, but there was a lot of money going on stipends. And so to make a stand, I decided to vote against a stipend, which happened to be cheering.
JB cheering.
And I didn't think other people would follow my lead and vote with me, but they did, and there was no more cheering stipend. So the next meeting, the house was full of cheerleader moms and cheerleaders, crying cheerleaders, and I'm like, how do I get out of this? And you didn't, like, how do we bring it back after it's voted? And you fixed that. You did fix that. So you learn the hard way. And so I kind of still complained about stipends, but you still raise your hand, right? You still raise your hand. And some of the big things that I lost, I learned very quickly to suck it up, and you just lost, right? We're not, even though you didn't agree or you didn't agree, we still all get along and had to move forward. I had a hard time with that at first because I thought, you know what? I'm really right about this eighth grade, or I'm really right about the time change. The time change was, I don't know if I changed my vote on that, but I was the one that voted against the time change. But all of those memories are here, and I'm not done with Mr. Ray because he will be doing a budget with me again. It's just gonna be in a different format this time around. But again, thank you to everybody, really. It's been, it's been, it's been a ride. It's been a fun ride, and I'm ready to get off and get on another one, maybe not so fun. I think Marty would know that. Might not be as fun, but I'll give it my best. Thank you.
Comments? John?
Yeah, I just want to say it's been an honor also to serve with everybody up here. I think we've accomplished a lot, and I'm proud of what we've done. It's been great work with everybody, administration, staff, everybody's been great, and I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I'll just echo those comments. Lisa, incredible 16 years, very proud of our, really awesome. And I just want to say that I'm so proud of our schools and our students and our staff and where Bedford is headed. We're in very good hands with Mayor Elect LaFountain. He's going to do a great job, and we look forward to the work of the committee and the council over the next, over the next two years. Okay, with that, I think we have a plan for a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go on executive session for 1 MRSA 405-6B personnel matter.
Second.
Moved and seconded the executive session. All those in favor? Okay, great. We will not, we will not be coming back, and-